You have no standards, can you?
Um, we'll jump right into discussion items. Full day kindergarten.
Okay.
Lynn Myers.
Alright, so, um... As a reminder, beginning in the 2015-16 school year, the legislative body agrees that school districts that implement kindergarten in a full-day setting will be reimbursed for kindergarten students at a full waiting of a 1.0 ATM. So currently, we only are reimbursed. We're only receiving funding for kindergarten students at half. And so, this increase does not mandate that we move to full-day kindergarten, but districts who elect to move to full-day programs will be compensated for those students at that full waiting. The administrative team, so, uh, we met as an administrative team, and then I met with all the kindergarten teachers across the district, and then I met with the administrative team again. And we have wholehearted support, and we're ready to move to full-day kindergarten on every set, so that will include every school in the district. Bethany is a little bit unique. Their school board is having their own conversation about whether they will move to full-day. Um, I have had conversations with their kindergarten teacher, but their board is able to make, according to the charter, is able to make that kind of curriculum decision on their own. And so, I don't have information on about where Bethany will land. I'm just pretty good at the topic, but I suppose you can certainly ask. I know her current position here tonight, so she may have information on that. But I don't have that as a very... So what you have in front of you is draft implementation with the best information that we have up to this point. And so, this is a culmination of those three meetings between both the administrative team and the kindergarten staff. So, there is clearly a fiscal impact on the district enough of that first table addresses. Moving to a full-day program from a half-day program requires an increase of certified teachers in FTE by 6.65. That feels like a little bit of a strange number, but we have some kindergarten teachers that are currently more than half-time in some settings. There's a building that employs a kindergarten teacher at .6. Uh, their kindergarten day is a little bit longer. There's a building that employs a kindergarten teacher at .75. She actually does a regular kindergarten session and then some additional work with the other primary aged students. Um, so the net increase for the district is 6.65. Out of that, um, 6.65, that includes five new full-time teachers. So, um, that's quite a bit of staff that we will be looking for. Our current plan is to begin internally first and to simply see if there's interest from any of our current primary teachers. Uh, now that kindergarten is full-time, are you interested in moving to a kindergarten position? We'll make that offer, um, potentially even as soon as next week, and begin those conversations. As far as internal transfers, and once we've identified where our openings really are, then we'll move to things like the job fair and working with OSBA and local universities and identify the best candidates out there to fill whatever remaining positions we have. But, um, we're fully aware that if we need five full-time teachers, there are many, many, many other districts who are also seeking highly qualified kindergarten teachers as well, so... But we're not above on finding the best and worrying them here. So, um, the projected cost, you'll see there that right-hand column for certified staff is just over $500,000. Next fiscal impact would be in the form of instructional assistance, and that would be support staff. We're looking at four hours of assisted support for each full-day kindergarten. The mindset behind that being essentially two hours of support in the morning for reading and writing, and two hours of support in the afternoon for math and science. And that that would be a minimum if, you know, buildings wanted to provide more than that. They certainly could, but that, uh, from both the teacher's perspective and the administrative's perspective, that felt like we needed to set a minimum somewhere. Um, and until we get a feel for what this really feels like and we get kindergarten teachers who are comfortable in that full-day setting, because it is, it is, it's a different, it's a different deal. It's not just two half-days put, you know, back-to-back. So, um, it's a much longer instructional day, obviously, for young students. So, there is $143,000 price tag, um, for those instructional assistants, and that is essentially represents the difference of what is currently invested in instructional systems that are already supporting kindergarten programs in the half-day setting, and extending that to everyone getting at least four hours of support. There would be some technology purchases and some furniture and curriculum purchases. Those would essentially be, to begin, uh, four of those classrooms will be brand-new settings, meaning they don't have any exist in a classroom somewhere else. So, for instance, at Duke Creek, we currently have, um, two kindergarten sessions, but they share the same classroom. So, in addition to two full-time sections, we are literally setting up another entire classroom. This requires tables and chairs and technology. So, in four instances, we are literally starting with empty, not necessarily empty classrooms. There may be some furniture in them, but, um, beginning with the Beret, we're going to actually building classrooms in four of those rooms. And so, all of those price tags added up together represent potential fiscal impact of just $10,000. You will notice the line item there for transportation. Um, it's our belief at this point that that should end up being cost-neutral. And essentially, what that looks like is we are able to eliminate all of those midday bus routes. However, it is still transporting the same number of kids, so those buses are going to have to be reallocated. We may be able to do some condensing, but, um, typically, most of those kids are coming to kindergarten in the morning and then going home midday, and now all of those kids will be going home at the end of the day. So, the thought process is that majority of those buses will just be shifted from that noon run to the after-school run in order to get everybody covered and home safely.
Got a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Do you know what our surrounding districts are doing? Is everybody else offering all day?
Yeah, so Mount Angel is already offering, um, full-day programs. And we've had... Did there are two students transfer out of Silver Falls to attend kindergarten full-day at Mount Angel?
Uh, I believe it was more than two, but it was in the full.
Okay, okay.
So Salem Kaiser State, yes?
Yes, yeah. As far as I know, when I attended my regional curriculum meetings, I didn't hear anyone that was not offering. But I, I don't want to say unequivocally that, you know, everyone is going to full-day, but that is definitely the case.
So the belief is if we don't offer, the kids are going to transfer out. And $707,000 will our additional funds come in?
That's a good one.
Let me address that later. There's 220 million allocated in the governor's budget and the House Ways and Means Committee Chair budget. Uh, the 220 million was, was estimated, Wally, based upon the anticipated FTE impact across the state. All the superintendents were surveyed. So, at this point, pending full processing through the funding formula, it's anticipated that this will, will fund us. In fact, there was some additional money put in there just to help offset the technology and facilities. Uh, the request was actually a little bit more, because there, there's, in some school districts, the facility needs are much greater than what we have here for full-day kindergarten. So, it's, at this point...
You believe it will...
I believe it, it will fund appropriately.
Thank you.
Facilities impact on the district, so there are three rows that are representing kind of three different mindsets. We have buildings that there's essentially no impact, and that's at Evergreen, Scottsmills, Silver Crest, and Bethany. All of those administrators and teachers said, "Look, it's used for a half-day program right now. Nobody else uses that classroom in the afternoon. We'll just extend it the afternoon. No impact." So that's that first row. The second row is there is some impact, but that can be managed within the building itself. And so, those are things like Duke Creek and Central Hall, where perhaps a music teacher may be displaced and will have to run music off of a cart, or will have to run music on the stage, or we can combine two classrooms and put ELD and Title together in a large shared space, where currently they have two smaller spaces individually. So at Duke Creek and Central Hall, those, those movements can all be handled and managed within the building. At Eugene Field and Victor Point, there becomes a little more strategic in nature in that, um, in order to implement full-day kindergarten in those two settings, it may require some relocation of some programs and some space outside of those buildings. So looking at, um, potential for reconfiguring a program to a different location, or, um, there are some pretty, uh, pretty good solid potential solutions for those, but, but in both the cases of Eugene Field and Victor Point, those have to be managed with some movement that will have some impact outside of that building. So...
Do you know specifics yet?
We have some, we do. We have some ideas. So there are some district-level programs, the halls in both of those settings, that could potentially be moved to another location where there's space. There is some conversation about reconfiguring programs like ELL anyways, and so, it may be that there ends up not being a significant impact if the ELL program is going to be reconfigured anyways. Perhaps that space will be freed up through a different conversation that's occurring at the same time, and if the structure of the ELL program changes, then that space is no longer needed in the ways we currently use for ELL, so that kindergarten could use that space. So, um, it is feasible in all of the buildings. It's feasible at Eugene Field and Victor Point, but there will be some impact that will likely flow outside of the building and to other buildings. But we have space in some other buildings to be able to do that.
It's mostly district-wide programs?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, I believe it's only district-wide programs. So, um, the communication at this point, let me kind of tell you where we've been. Though we've been having a lot of meetings, everything at this point has pretty much been word-of-mouth. We haven't publicized particularly. I fielded quite a few phone calls. An administrator fielded maybe a handful of phone calls. And essentially, our talking points at this point have been pretty vague. The district intends to have full-day kindergarten in classrooms by September. Full-day kindergarten will be offered district-wide, and we're currently in the planning stages. And, um, for the most part, that has answered people's questions. They just want to know, "Are we doing this, or are we not doing this?" And the second round of questions from, "Can we do it at Eugene Field?" And yes, the response has been, "We're, you know, we don't have all of those details finalized, but we believe it is feasible, and it will be offered in six full sessions at Eugene Field as well." Our plan from here on forward, beginning probably as early as next week, will, uh, begin to flood some of the media outlets. We've got the district newsletter, which is distributed electronically. We have the district webpage, the district Facebook page, individual school newsletters, which are distributed both electronically and in hard copy. And then, uh, the regularly scheduled class notes, which goes out as part of our town. Eugene Field is already scheduled as one of the story highlights in February, and they have elected to do their highlight on full-day kindergarten at Eugene Field. So that will go out that way as well. Kindergarten Roundups start, uh, mid-April, and those are scheduled at all school sites, somewhere mid-April to mid-May. We will have a, uh, district-wide brochure that will be distributed to all families that participate in kindergarten roundup. And around that same time, probably late April, no, we said early April. We just set a date. We're going to have an Early Childhood Summit, which is basically a time where we invite in the local preschools and the local daycare providers, and we will give them the most updated and current information that we have on full-day kindergarten to make sure that they're sending that information out to their families as well. Ironically, that's been several of the phone calls that we fielded at the district office is healthcare providers who are realizing that they're losing some clientele based upon full-day kindergarten options. And, um, all of them that I've spoken with have been very supportive educationally. They're fully in agreement and believe it's a good educational opportunity for students. They just need to know, you know, what happens with the impact on the small businesses. So, it's been some good dialogue with those groups as well. So we'll bring them in and sit down with them in April.
Linda, have parents you talked to generally onboard, or have you...
Yeah, we, you know, the administrators, you know, wonder sort of where, where will this fall out in some of, you know, in some of our conservative communities? We wondered if there would be some pushback. At this point, I haven't encountered, none of the telephone calls that have come to me have been negative or concerning. Everyone has been very, very supportive and excited about moving this direction.
A lot of people, a lot of people like me, I'm not very excited about it all, but in order to meet these three standards, this is the only way to, only way to do that. I think, I think parents realize that.
And there is some, there is some way to...
Maybe a question for Andy or for other board members, but do we, are we anticipating passing a resolution and with some recitals that say the reasons and findings of fact, that sort of thing, that why we're endorsing and making the decision to, to implement? That could be some good leadership from the board.
Sure, we can, we can do that. Some school boards have done that, others have not, and they've chosen to, to just use the route of the school budget process and making certain that the communication plan is clear, that the board is moving ahead with plans for full-day kindergarten. But absolutely, we can put something like that together and make sure that we have a formal, formal approval of that, you bet. Good.
I think your administrative team would appreciate that most definitely, too. I think there, there's unanimous approval and backing for moving that in this direction, but to be able to have the support of this school board would be phenomenal.
Linda, what would you do with the pickup times? Would you stagger those, or how would that work?
You know, that's, that's kind of a far-reaching conversation that we're, that we're just beginning to have with the bus barn, and I don't have a good answer to that yet, but it's something that we definitely have considered. What do we look at? Standardizing pickup and drop-off times across the districts to, to help smooth out transportation? Do we, do we need the staggered schedules like we have now in order to make transportation work? We're going to need to work pretty closely with the bus barn to get a better handle on that.
Well, what I see is like up at Evergreen and Eugene Field, I don't, I'm not too aware of like Victor Point, but kindergarteners aren't going to be ones that are going to walk 300 feet up to a car, you know? So you got them all coming at the same time. I would think they would almost have to be let out first or whatever.
And I think there, those are probably some unique variables depending on setting.
Yeah.
I do think there's some impact at, at a place like Evergreen where the car line, I don't know what that looks like, you know? So do you, do you do a 10-minute stagger, keeping in mind that you have sibling groups? So, parents that are coming just to pick up kindergarten are also going to have sibs to pick up, you know? I think, um, once we have a good handle on what the bus transportation will look like, and at, at some schools, that takes care of a majority of the students. And setting like Evergreen, the car line takes care of a majority of students. So I do think there's going to have to be some allowance for what the individual school setting look like, and how can the building principal manage that? So, it's certainly reasonable that there will be some special considerations for getting kindergarteners out hooked up with parents safely, because you're right, most of them exist now in a setting where they're the only ones released at that time, and a teacher has eye-to-eye physical, "Okay, you're going with your mom, and you're going with your mom," and, you know, we're still going to want that for our youngest kids. The statement at the bottom of the page is kindergarten teachers talked about this at length, and administrative team talked about this at length, and, um, kind of addressing that, "What do we do with families that are uncomfortable with the full-day setting?" And I just decided that that's not, um, the best setting for their, for their child. And so, um, at this point, basically, our statement is, "We're absolutely willing to work with families, but that will need to occur in a structured meeting, so that there's some good, clear guidance as far as setting up the instructional day, some clear understanding what would, what would your child miss by going home at lunchtime, what opportunities can you provide at home? What we're trying to avoid is, "Well, Johnny doesn't want to stay today, so I'm going to come pick him up, and, 'Oh, but there's a party tomorrow, so Johnny wants to stay tomorrow.'" Well, no, let's formalize this a little bit. If, you know, we're going to set up a half-day schedule, um, and, you know, if, if several months pass and you believe that, you know, Johnny has built up the stamina to stay for the full day, we can extend that an hour at a time, we, you know, whatever. But we're going to be pretty purposeful about planning those and try to keep that formalized a little bit. Essentially, that's what we're first and secondary.
You need to, for the, for the teacher, for the students. So is the idea basically have packets the kids can take home and try to catch up?
You know, we haven't gotten that far, and part of the reason we haven't gotten that far is because what I believe to be true is a parent who thinks that their child only wants to be their half-day or can only manage being their half-day, you get in a week or two, child's not going to want to go home at lunch when he or she realizes that everyone else in the class is staying. So, um, I don't know how much effort will invest upfront to having things prepared to send home with kids till we're really in and that we've identified, "Okay, these are really our half-dayers, and these are really our full-dayers." I think we're going to need to give that some time to play out, and it's new to everyone. And so that anxiety level is heightened because I know, and, um, and I was the mother of a full-day kindergartner, and Cole was very, very young. He turned five in late July, and we happened to live in Salem Kaiser in a setting where the school had full-day kindergarten, and we were very anxious about that. He was young, he was hyper, and I took, you know, it took two weeks for him to sort of settle into, he was exhausted when he came home, but I know within a few days there would have been no way he would have let me come pick him up and go home at lunch. So, you know, they're very social, but, but, Cole, they're wired, so...
We're, excuse me, Linda, we're fortunate in that we have some history in this district of full-day kindergarten. Of course, we have it currently at Scottsmills, and it's proved to be quite a powerful measure over the last couple of years to help us address some of the same things that Linda's talking about. But historically, we've had full-day kinder at Silver Crest and Pradam. Silver Crest for sure.
Pradam as well, for a while.
And for a few years, you know, it was funded by, on site specifically funded, and, uh, and it worked very well, and those teachers are still around and still are able to offer some great insight in how to best address full-day kinder.
And it's been very, very helpful to our kinder team to have Sarah at Scottsmills just be able to field questions and, um, just kind of that local expert. Well, she's done it for two years, and they kind of peppered her with questions, and she, so she's done a really nice job, and is very willing to be that resource and, um, you know, help the teachers figure out how to do this. So, great. The back of your sheet doesn't really require a lot of conversation. This is just a very preliminary, just so that you can see what a full-day might look like. If you've got kids on-site for six hours, what does that actually look like instructionally? What does that look like for breaks and recesses and snack? So, uh, we don't need to spend time necessarily going through that, but that just gives you some insight into what a day might actually look like. Lots of information. We'll keep you posted, obviously, as we move forward. If you have questions now, or if you have questions, don't hesitate to email or holler, whatever. We're just going to go and figure out step-by-step, so...
Your, um, your comment that you're going to be able to find qualified staffing as the whole state is sucking it up?
You know, we've been incredibly fortunate in that people continue to seek Silver Falls as a place to work. So I, because we're also starting very early, I mean, we're beginning to have these conversations in the first and second week of February, that's going to give us a pretty good jumpstart on really identifying. And if we can find some of the best of our own best to move to full-day kindergarten and, you know, potentially...
Backfill a sixth grader.
Second grader, fourth grader, I think we'll be just fine.
That's what I was going to say, if that opens up, I mean, if you have some people go down to kindergarten, then you're not, you're not just hollering for kindergarten teachers. Do we have current kindergarten teachers that don't want to do full-day?
Yes, but not because of, we have half-time teachers who do the family decisions and, and are just electing to stay half-day. And so, they, uh, will likely job-share with one another.
Okay, so there's an opportunity.
Yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, we're not forcing them to move to full-time, and actually, the numbers play out evenly, so it may be...
Oh, that's good. Yeah, good. Other questions for Linda? Linda, thank you for all your work on this. You guys are well on your way, it sounds like. So, thank you.
Tim, if I can ask one more question, I, I'm treating body language and questions. I'm hearing just general head nods that the six of you anyway are comfortable with, with moving ahead with this, will prepare the resolution, put that in front of you, and have you take formal action on that. But I, if there was any opposition to this, I, I would sure want to begin hearing that now or as soon as possible. That way, we could best address your concerns or any questions, additional questions that you may have. Otherwise, I'll plan on drafting a, a resolution, have you take a look at that, even as soon as your February regular session. You can review it at that time and choose to take action or not, and go from there.
You know, the financial impact was my only question, and it sounds like that's not an issue.
Yeah, great.
As far as we know... We're hoping. Trust them. Okay, anything else on that? Okay.
Draft 2015-2016 school calendar.
Yeah, it's that time of year to begin discussing school year calendars again, so you have two, two drafts in front of you. One of them is, says after Labor Day, the other says before Labor Day. We, we haven't given you a before Labor Day option in the last few years, and, you know, generally, we know historically that the board hasn't been incredibly favorable of a before Labor Day option, but because we're, I guess, at the beginning of some kind of calendar cycle, it causes the end of the school year, beginning of the school year to begin late, and then that results in the end of the school year being in the middle of June. And so, we put a before Labor Day option in, in front of you for consideration. Otherwise, it's a K-12 calendar, again, while the teachers may be doing something different at the elementary or high school level on, on, on a number of particular days over the course of the calendar year. Students are either in school or out of school at the same time, whether you're a kindergartner, third grader, or 12th grader, which, this is the first year we tried it, current year. It's proved to be very successful, and parents have seemed to have been receptive to it and pleased that we're, we're able to have this kind of calendar where everyone's in school or out of school at the same time. So, I throw it your way for conversation. It's no need for action on it tonight, but anticipating that one or, one of these will be of interest to you, we'll, we can place this in front of you as an action item in February.
Have the associations weighed in on the either before or after Labor Day?
Only in conversation. They haven't seen these, the drafts yet, Tim, so I wanted to show them to you first, but once we get some input from you, we'll get them to the association tomorrow.
Just one thing to keep in mind, this has been a really mild winter this year.
Right.
So it'll probably make up for itself next year.
Yeah, we had snow days on to the, that post-Labor Day schedule pretty late in the year.
That's true.
Have, have we ever started school before Labor Day?
Not, not that I recall.
It'd be a big switch.
That's just going to be a...
Yeah, I would think, I think it might be an unpopular decision.
I don't think it's a great idea.
People are just used to...
And what's the most, uh, snow days has been like three even on a bad winter. I mean, it hasn't been extreme.
Yeah.
A, a few school districts begin before Labor Day, but clearly, the lion's share begin after Labor Day.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if I want to upset the apple cart at this point. Any discussion on this? Do you, do you think, are you, did you want us to take action on this in February?
Uh, parents would sure appreciate that. We get, it's, we tell you, we get phone calls from parents at the beginning of December.
I think we probably could. Everybody give us some thought if you have any strong opinions on one or the other, let Andy know, and, um, and you could, you could email us what, who went to the associations and what you want.
Sure, we can do that. And, uh, I'm, I'm hearing from you that it sounds like the interest is in the after-Labor Day schedule, and so, assuming that the association and classified and licensed both are in agreement with that, then we'll give you the after-day, Labor Day schedule again in February for you to consider, or if you cannot, you can email.
Moving on, mid-year fiscal accounting and reporting semi-annual meeting. Just for the public's information, twice a year, we, um, we look at our, look at the fiscal accounting and reporting option. We do this, like I just said, two times a year. We, we, there's 10...
10?
Yeah. 10, Scott will, Scott will talk if he, if he wants to, and Andy, too. There's 10 questions that I ask, ask of both Andy and Scott around the financial part of things. And the 11th question, and I wanted to, I wanted to clarify this tonight, because we got an email about this earlier. The 11th question is personnel-related, and so, OSVA recommends anything personnel-related you do in executive session. And I believe it's also, I mean, we're, we've always practiced personnel-related questions are discussed in executive session. So, um, so that's the reasoning for going to, into executive session just to ask, um, our business manager without the superintendent present that last question under. So we'll adjourn, then we'll move into executive session, take care of that, and that's the only item for executive session tonight. So, I just wanted to clarify that, but that's the reason we go into executive session for this. Okay, Scott, should I just start with the questions?
Yeah, however you'd like to proceed.
Okay. Are the books balanced and reconciled?
They are through December and spreadsheet, so I won't read the whole thing. You can see that, but they are balanced and reconciled, yes.
And Andy, jump in if you have any comments on anything.
Yeah, the policy requires that both of us answer, and I, and I agree.
Okay. Does the adopted budget reflect expected expenditures?
Uh, yes, they do. I do expect staffing costs to exceed budgeted staffing costs slightly this year, as the case was last year. The bargaining, the final settlement of bargaining unit was higher than we had estimated in our, in our budgeting balance, covered because we use the weighted average, uh, position cost budgeting model, or the average of staff, that tends to temper any kind of staffing cost increases. So, we'll do a more thorough analysis in March when we start preparing that analysis for the ending of that balance.
Okay, okay. Are all payroll reports filed, and have all payroll liabilities been paid timely?
Yes, everything has been paid timely. You'll notice there, I put in a, we're having a bit of a challenge with the reconciliation of a, of a per's payment. The payments have been made. It's just the amount that they take out, since we're managing the general ledger and infant business, we're having a hard time making sure that those numbers are matching[1765.54] time making sure that those numbers are matching up. It's a fairly common problem with districts, usually because PERS takes out more, or they take out a different amount of money than we think that they should be taking.
Well, in, in PERS reconciliation, they get access to information that we don't have access to. As an example, a substitute teacher that works for multiple school districts, we wouldn't know that, PERS does. And so in order for PERS to reconcile, they need our data and the data from all school districts in order to appropriately reconcile, and we're required to do that, and we'll by February 28th.
So do you use their, their numbers, or do you?
Well, we, we actually, yeah, we mostly rely on theirs. They, they actually do an ACH poll, so they pull the money out of our account, and so that's why we have to reconcile essentially to their numbers.
Have all federal and state grant reimbursement requests, as well as required financial reporting forms been timely filed?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Are there any cases of fraud that we need to be aware of?
None to my knowledge, no.
Are there any changes in the internal control system?
I noticed a couple of slight changes, mostly around the use of the new accounting system, so the journal entries are created and reviewed electronically, but the electronic notebook, sure.
And, and I agree, and I, I have no concerns about the internal control system, even the changes that we've implemented due to the infinite vision software.
Okay.
Have you implemented the, you talked, came to us and talked about the credit cards or the gift card?
P-cards.
Oh, yeah, the purchasing card, yes.
Have you implemented those now?
Those have worked out real well. We've had only close, close to accounts all year, and so that's, I know it's just because of late, not time to return receipts, but, yeah, that's worked out real well for us.
So it's giving you better control?
Any cases of fraud or anything in that regard.
Giving you better control?
It is, we're seeing the, we're seeing more of the purchases ahead of time, and we have the opportunity to approve those purchases, so that's, that's really where the better control has resided. We're still having, you know, it's a bad habit, and sometimes we get receipts, you know, two weeks later, three weeks later, and that, that case, we should tighten up a bit, but other than that, I think we're overall, I'd say, it's a positive thing.
Are there any changes in the accounting system or accounting procedures?
Well, since our last one, we, we talked, I believe it was, we spoke in June, it may have been in July, but we have obviously made the conversion from the accounting system. We also implemented a cash receiving and student account management system in the high school, which has been very helpful for us, it's really tightened up our high school cash control situation a lot, we're very happy with that. So the day-to-day accounting procedures have changed slightly as we utilize the software, we're getting, seeing some efficiencies there, so.
Agreed, Andy?
I'm sorry, yes.
Are there, are there any other financial-related matters we should be aware of?
Well, we are, it has taken longer than expected on training, on processes, and ramping up with the new software. That's, it's taken longer than I had expected, and, and we've had some conversations today with my business office staff, and they've identified some other areas that they feel like they need more training. We're looking at that on a regular basis. We are behind a bit in our accounting tasks, but we are getting caught up, we put together, implemented a plan, just today, I actually started with that plan of getting it taken care of, so we should be caught up with the combined [inaudible].
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree.
Heard there was some missteps on the paychecks this period?
Yes, there was.
Is that part of this as well?
Yeah, part of that, mostly around the areas of the training and the software. We had some, a docking module that we had to implement and start docking some time for people that have taken off for time and delayed the posting of the payroll until very late. There was a mistake in the date that the payday was supposed to occur, and we corrected that on Friday, but, I mean, it was, you know, if you've heard about it, it was, it was a big issue. This is not going to be discussed, it took a lot of time, so, but.
It's all, it's all resolved now?
Resolved effectively today.
Are all cash investment accounts reconciled to the records?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are all financial statements and information provided to the board accurate and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, they are, and you'll notice on that last board report, it was a strict on, to represent that [inaudible], that you'll probably see in your next board report that [inaudible].
Okay. Any other questions, ready, guys? Okay, we'll get the last one in executive session. Okay, any other discussion items? Okay, move to action items. This is the time we want to renew the, or begin the renewal process for the charter schools, charter schools. So approved request by Community Roots Charter School for renewal of charter agreement.
And Tim, if I could chime in, before any, any action is taken on this, and for the sake of the public that's here as well, is that the charter renewal, coincidentally, both Community Roots Charter School and Bethany Charter School come up for renewal at the same time, and what your action tonight does is it, is it results in your agreement, that you want to continue with the two schools, and for us to begin any, any changes or negotiations with revisions to the charter agreements, including lease agreements with each of your respective charter schools. So you're required to take action 20 days after your public hearing, your, your public hearing occurred at the last regular session.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. That was a little.
I was wondering what we're doing tonight.
Yeah.
So approved request by Community Roots Charter School for renewal of charter agreement, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approved request by Bethany Charter School for renewal of charter agreement, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.